The session is now called to order. Everybody is requested to rise for the singing of the Philippine national anthem.
Bayang magiliw, pero saan silang anan? Alang ng puso sa titik moy buhay. Lupang hilirang, buya ka lang magiliw. Sa manlulupi, kita pasisinil. Sa lalat at bundok, sa simoy at sa langit mong pabahay. May hilang ang tula at awit sa paglayang ilawahay. Ang isap ng wata at moy kagumpay narapilipil. Ang pituming at harong ya kailan, pangpali magidilip. Luban ang maraw ng war, hangit pagsak. Uyay lami sa titiko. Amigayan apat may mahapin, alamat ay ng daring sayo.
Please remain standing for a minute of silent prayer. Majority Leader.
Motion to suspend, Your Honor.
Session is suspended.
Yung yesterday boss, ano siya incentives to filmmakers in the film?
Si Kaden Nalatinsa, service of assistance.
Yes, boss.
Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members.
The Secretary General is directed to call the roll of members.
Roll call of members. Honorable Representatives. Abaya. Abayon. Abel Yenosa. Abou. Abwek. Atsaron. Akop. Acosta. Acosta Alba. Adjong. Adbin Kula. Agarau. Agabao. Agbey Bay Bilyar. Albano. Alcala. Alihano. Almario. Almonte. Alonte. Alvarez Franz. Alvarez Mercedes. Alvarez Pantalyon. Amante. Amatong. Andaya. Mangara Castillo. Antonino. Antonio. Aquino Magsay Say. Aragones. Arbison. Arcillas. Arenas. Atsienza. Aumentado. Bagau. Bagatsing. Bagilat. Banal. Barbers. Barsaga. Batawil. Batukabe. Bautista Bandigan. Belaro. Belmonte Pilistiano. Belmonte Jose Christopher. Belmonte Ricardo. Benitez. Vernos. Bertis. Viason. Biliones. Viron. Bolilia. Bundok. Bordado. Bravo Anthony. Bravo Maria Bida. Brosas. Bulut Big Tang. Tagas. Kalalang. Calderon. Calixto Rubiano. Caminero. Campus. Kanama. Kari. Casilau. Castelo. Castro Franz. Castro Fredenil. Katango. Caetano. Celeste. Cirapica. Siriles. Chaves. Chipeco. Co. Cojuanco. Juliantes. Cortez. Cortuna. Cusalan. Crisologo. Kuwa. Kuaresma. Cueba. Dalipe. Datol. Daza. De Jesus. De Venecia. De Vera. Defensor. Del Mar. Del Rosario. De Losomontalia. Dimaporo Abdullah. Dimaporo Muhammad Khalid. Duabit. Durano. Di. Ilago. Inverga. Erise. Irigel. Hermita Buain. Scudero. Espina. Espino. Estrella. Yusebio. Ivardone. Fariñas. Fernando. Ferrer Juliet Marie. Ferrer Luis. Periol. Florrendo. Flores. Fortun. Fortuno. Fente Velha. Garbin. Garcia Gwendolin. Garcia Jose Enrique. Garcia Albano. Garin Oscar. Garin Sharon. Gasataya. Gatsalian. Heron. Go Anna Cristina. Go Mark. Gomez. Gonzaga. Gonzalez Alexandria. Gonzalez Aureliond. Gonzalez Fernando. Gorseta. Gulyas. Hernandez. Herrera Di. Hofer. Alos Jos. Habir. Co. Con Hun. Labad Labad. Laxson. Lagman. Lanete. Logan. Lasatin. Liatson. Lee. Linkay Chong. Lobrigat. Lopez Benjur. Lopez Carlo. Lopez Manuel Luis. Loyola. Makapagalaroyo. Maceda. Madrona. Malapitan. Manalo. Mangawang. Mangodadato Soharto. Mangodadato Sajid. Marcoleta. Marcos. Mariño. Marquez. Martinez. Matucas. Millana. Mending. Mendoza. Mercado. Mirasol. Montoro. Naba. Nieto. Noel. Nograles Jerico. Nograles Carlo Alexi. Nolasco. Nunez Malaníaon. Uaminal. Ocampo. Olivares. Ong Edwin. Ong Henry. Ortega Pablo. Ortega Vininola. Pacquiao. Paduano. Palma. Pancho. Pangani Ban. Panotes. Papandayan. Pichai. Pimentel. Pineda. Plaza. Premisiya Sagabás. Kimbo. Radaza. Ramirezato. Ramos. Relampagos. Rivilla. Roapuno. Robes. Rocamora. Rodriguez Isidro. Rodriguez Maximo. Roman. Romero. Romualdes. Romualdo. Roque. Sacdalan. Sagarbaria. Sahali. Salceda. Salimbangan. Salo. Salon. Sambart. San Copan. San Dobal. Santos Recto. Sarmiento César. Sarmiento Edgar Meri. Sabillano. Semah. Xiao. Silverio. Singzon. Suansing Estrellietta. Suansing Horacio. Suarez. Si Alvarado. Tambunting. Tan Angelina. Tan Milagrosa. Tan Sherni. Tejada. Teves. Chanko. Ting. Tiño. Tolentino. Trenyas. Tugna. Tupas. Di. Umalí. Unavia. Ungab. Uniko. Uy Juliet. Uy Rolando. Uy Bareta. Vargas. Vargas Alfonso. Bellarde. Bilasco. Bilasco Catera. Beloso. Vergara. Villapuerte. Villanueva. Villarrasa Suarez. Villarica. Villarin. Biulago. Yap Arthur. Yap Mileseho. Yap Victor. Yu. Zamora Maria Carmen. Zamora Ronaldo. Sarate. Subiri. The speaker is present.
Madam Speaker, the roll call shows that 205 members responded to the call.
With 205 members responding to the call, the Chair declares the presence of a quorum. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, we move that we approve Journal Number 7 dated August 6, 2018.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Journal of August 6, 2018 is hereby approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we request to acknowledge guests of the Honorable CRLP de Losomontalia. They are electrical engineering students of President Ramón Magsay Say Technological University. Their names are Joan Suset Akain, Merrily Grace Apino, Arthur Balawang, Oriel Balawang, Harfel Beracio, Roy Kayabyab, Roniel de Guzmán, Ayan Oswald Ebalian, Romulo Ensho Junior, Sin Darrel Pahardo, Tommy Foniestas, Roel Historia, Angelo Loterte, Christian Marafina, Francis Mertola, Marjon Mislan, Camil Muega, Senato Oriancia Junior, Princess May An Pagyo, Orlando Pasarita Junior, Daniel, Jake Sabala. Also, another guest of the Honorable de Losomontalia. They are students from Mechanical Engineering. They are students from mechanical engineering students of President Ramon Magcaysay Technological University. Nick Johnson Fernandez, Melvin de los Santos, Omari Yamal Cantano, Nelmar Aguilar, Adrian Guadamor, Seffirelli Michael Duallios, Christopher McClatt, John Paul Castillo, Sammy de Guzman, Hermojanes Mejía Junior, Yomar Lipau Pow, Alro Abalos Wilmer Sarmiento. Also, Madam Speaker, students constituents of the Honorable Kuya Jose Antonio Si Alvarado. They are from students from STI.
The guest of Representative de Losomontalia is welcome to the House of Representatives. Thank you for your visit. Majority Leader, please proceed.
Madam Speaker, I would acknowledge the constituents of Kuya Jose Antonio Si Alvarado, Erica Cruz STI College, Pauline Charis Ann Rebancos STI College, RG Agravante Gonzalez STI College from Malolos Bulakan.
The guest of the Representative Si Alvarado is welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader?
Also, Madam Speaker, requesting acknowledgement of the Grade 12 students from Miriam College, constituents of the Honorable George Bullet Banal, including their teacher, Ms. Rizalyn Escamacio.
The guest of Congressman Banal is welcome to the House of Representatives. Thank you for your visit. Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker, we move that we proceed to the reference of business and for this reason, I move that we now proceed with the refer- uh, we request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of the bills, resolutions, and first reading, as well as communications and committee reports.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the reference of business.
Reference of Business Bills on First Reading, House Bill 7990 Providing for National Disaster Resilience Fund, Representative Romero.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security.
House Bill 7991 Prohibiting the imposition of interest under penalty charges on unpaid hospital bills and medical expenses to patients who earn minimum wage or less, Representative Silverio.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 7992 Increasing the Coverage of Statutory Rate as Defined in Article 266-A1D of Act Number 3815, Representative Gatsalian.
To the Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 7993 Regulating Electronic Cigarettes, Representative Barberas.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry and the Committee on Health.
House Bill 7994 Amending Chapter 7, Title 6, and Section 151 Creating New Sections 151A and 151B of RA 8424, Representative Swan Sing.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 7995 Declaring July 27 of Every Year a Special Non-Working Holiday in the Entire Country in Recognition and Commemoration of the Founding of Iglesia Niquisto, Representatives Swan Sing Estadita and Swan Sing Rashe.
To the Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 7996 Providing HMO for All Public School Teachers, Representative Si Alvarado.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 7997 Amending Certain Sections of PD 612, Representative Si Alvarado.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
House Bill 7998 Converting the Eastern Visaya State University Dulag Satellite Campus in Dulaglete into Regular Campus of the Eastern Visaya State University to be known as the Eastern Visaya State University Dulag Campus, Representative Noel.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 7999 Reapportioning Bohol into Five Legislative Districts, Representative Aumentado.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 8000 Renewing the Franchise of Baganian Broadcasting Corporation, Representative Romero.
To the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
House Bill 8001 Enabling the Intellectual Property Office through the NTC2 Council Licenses of Internet Service Providers that allow website to infringe or to facilitate infringement of copyright, Representatives Salo and Kalalang.
To the Committee on Information and Communications Technology and the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 8002 Amending RA 9711, Representative Yap.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 8003 Establishing Regional Jails Under the VOC, Representatives Batocabe, Garbin, and Co.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 8004 Requiring Establishment of Computer Laboratory in All Public Elementary and Secondary Schools, Representatives Nieto, Maceda, Martinez, San Dival, and Malapitan.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 8005 Separating the Regulatory and Commercial Functions in the Philippine Ports Authority by converting it into Philippine Ports Corporation, Representative Yap.
To the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization.
House Bill 8007 Establishing Emergency Rice Reserves, Representative Si Alvarado.
To the Special Committee on Food Security.
House Bill 8008 Creating the National Nuclear Radiation Safety Board, Representative Si Alvarado.
To the Committee on Science and Technology.
House Bill 8009 Providing Free Education for the Children and Qualified Dependents of Public School Teachers Who Died in Service, Representative Lakson.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 8010 Standardizing the Appropriate Class Size in Public Schools Nationwide, Representative Lakson.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 8011 Institutionalizing Certain Working Incentives of OJT Nurses in Public and Private Hospitals, prohibiting the collection of experience fees by Representative Lakson.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 8012 Providing the Seasonable Filing of a Motion for Reconsideration and/or Appeal shall stay the execution of challenged order or of decision by Representatives Lagman, Salo, Leccion, Go, Belmonte, and Sambar.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bills, House Bill Numbers 8013 and 8015 Granting Franchise to Solar Para Sa Bayan Corporation by Representatives Yap and Samora Maria Carmen.
To the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
House Bill 8016 Providing for a Magna Carta for Workers, Enterprises, and Organizations in the Formal Economy.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 8017 Penalizing the Use of Sidewalks for Commercial and/or Personal Purposes by Representative Alejano.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 8018 Enhancing the Use of National Wealth for Local Development by Representative Alejano.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 8019 Enhancing the Share of LGU's Internal Revenue Taxes by Representative Alejano.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 8020 Enhancing inter-LGU Cooperation by Amending Certain Provisions in Book 1 of RA 7160, Representative Alejano.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 8021 Rationalizing Credit Financing for LGU's, Representative Alejano.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 8022 Providing for Business-Friendly Tax Remedies in LGU's, Representative Alejano.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 8023 Enhancing the Taxing Powers of LGU's by Representative Alejano.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 8024 Enhancing Public Financial Management in LGU's by Amending Certain Provisions in RA 7160, Representative Alejano.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 8025 Defining and Prohibiting Political Dynasties by Representative Alejano.
To the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 8026 Amending Sections 5 and 8 of RA 9505 by Representative Alejano.
To the Committee on Economic Affairs.
House Bill 8027 Strengthening the Internal Affairs Service of the PNP, Representative Alejano.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 8028 Creating the Youth Drug Abuse Resistance Education Prevention Program by Representative Alejano.
To the Committee on Dangerous Drugs.
House Bill 8029 Institute a National Comprehensive Framework on Resilient Housing and Human Settlement, Representative Alejano.
To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 8030 Strengthening the Barangay Unit to Support for Barangay Officials and Barangay Volunteer Workers, Representative Alejano.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 8031 Expanding the Coverage of the Definition of the Crime of Sexual Harassment to Include Unwanted Text Messages, Electronic Mail or Communications, or Other Similar Means, Representative Alejano.
To the Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 8032 Strengthening the Institutional Capacity of the Office of the Ombudsman by Representative Alejano.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 8033 Improving and Promoting Quality Delivery of Health Services in Barangays, Representative Alejano.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 8034 Establishing Strategic Food Security Rice Reserve, Representative Alejano.
To the Special Committee on Food Security.
House Bill 8035 Curtailing the Illegal Activities of Racketeers and Powerful Syndicates in the Philippines, Representative Alejano.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 8036 Accelerating Development of Idle and Under-Utilized Agricultural Lands, Representative Alejano.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 8037 Strengthening the Employment Rights of Members of the Citizen Armed Forces for the Reserve Force of the AFP, Representative Alejano.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security.
House Bill 8038 Providing for the Democratization of Public School Education, Representative Alejano.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 8039 Providing for Public Sale Shares in the Disposition of Government Corporations Under Privatization Program, Representative Alejano.
To the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization.
House Bill 8040 Requiring Hospitals Establish Implement Security Procedures to Reduce the Likelihood of Infant-Patient Abduction-Baby-Switching, Representative Alejano.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 8041 Rationalizing the Tipology of Higher Education Institutions, Representative Alejano.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 8042 Mandating the Creation of the Position of the Municipal General Services Officer, Representative Alejano.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 8043 Establishing Reforms in Recovery System Laws Charged by Private Companies and Rural Electric Cooperatives under RA 7832, Representative Alejano.
To the Committee on Energy.
House Bill 8044 Requiring the Teaching of Disaster Awareness and Disaster Mitigation as Part of the Curriculum of All Primary and Secondary Schools, Representative Alejano.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 8045 Granting Professional Career Service Eligibility to Acting Post-Masters.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 8046 Establishing One-Stop Shop Centers for Small-Scale Medium Enterprises, Representative Alejano.
To the Committee on Small Business and Entrepreneurship Development.
House Bill 8047 Empowering the Barangay Amending for the Purpose Virus Provisions of RA 7160.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 8048 Strengthening the Role of Local Health Officers in Area-Based Health Planning.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 8049 Amending Section 13 of RA 7160.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 8050 Amending Section 9 of RA 1398.
To the Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 8051 Amending Sections 3, 5, 1, 3 of PD 1464.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 8052 Declaring the 23rd Day of May of Every Year's Visual Inspection with Acetic Acid.
To the Committee on Health.
8053 Creating National Obesity Control System, Representative Alejano.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bills 8054 Establishing Elementary Schools San Isidro Haro, Iloilo City, Representative Trenyas.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 8056 Providing for National Disaster Resilience Act, Representative Romero.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security.
House Bill 8057 Extending for 25 Years the Franchise of Soundstream Broadcasting Corporation, Representative Garcia Gwendolin.
To the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
House Bill 8058 Calibrating Asylums and Psychiatric Institutions in the Country, Representative Castelo.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 8059 Criminalizing Remissness of Subcontractors of Government Projects whose Quality Work is Below Prescribed Standards, Representative Castelo.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 8060 Regulating Shipping Vessels Coasting Philippine Waters for the Protection of Shores, Representative Si Alvarado.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 8061 Declaring Establishing Rivers, River Systems, Beaches, Shores, Representative Si Alvarado.
To the Committee on Ecology.
House Bill 8062 Reconstituting the Governing Board of Philippine Coconut Authority, Representative Rocamora.
To the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization.
House Bill 8063 Creating the Office of Commuter Affairs in the DOTR, Representative Diazon.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 8064 Providing for the Construction of Marcelo Briones Fernand Memorial Monument City Hall of Bogo, City, Representative Salimbango.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 8065 Declaring October 24 of Every Year Special Non-Working Holidays known as Marcelo Briones Fernand in City of Bogo, Representative Salimbango.
To the Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 8066 and 8067 Declaring June 16 and December 27 of Every Year Special Non-Working Holidays in Bye Bye Late, Representative Kari.
To the Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 8068 Creating the Department of Water, Irrigation, Sewage, and Sanitation Resource Management, Representative Makapagalaroyo.
To the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization and the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
Resolutions. House Resolution 2057 Urging the Securities Exchange Commission to Revise the IRR of RA 9856, Representative Yap.
To the Committee on Economic Affairs.
House Resolution 2058 Congratulating Commending Tanawan Little League for Winning the 2018 Little League Senior Softball World Series last Monday, August 6, Representative Sambar.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
Communications, Report on Fund Utilization Status Program, Leganes Iloilo.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Report on Fund Utilization Program Project Implementation of Norasagay Bulakan.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Virus Reports of Local Governments per Attachment Random.
To the Committee on Local Government.
Letters dated Au- one August of Pahardo Office of the General Counsel Legal Services BSP.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Committee Reports. Report Numbers 811 to 813 by the Committees on Aquaculture, Fisheries, and Appropriations on HB 8069 and 8071.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Numbers 814 and 815 by the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader?
Madam Speaker?
Majority Leader?
Ma'am, I am standing as a member of the House. The Majority Leader is Congressman Marcoleta.
The Honorable Andaya is not recognized.
Yes, ma'am. I would like to rise from a question of personal and collective privilege. If I may be allowed, Madam Speaker?
Please proceed.
Yes, uh, yesterday, we held a, uh, voteation in which the plenary decided on who should be recognized as the Minority Leader. The subsequent news items unfortunately carried the statements of all those who voted against the recognition of Congressman Suarez. If I may be allowed at these five minutes to at least give the side of the majority on the wisdom on why we voted that way so as not to leave an impression that we were just merely bullying the members or that was just sheer numbers that were relied upon in recognizing our current minority leader.
Please proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'll go straight to the point. Rule 2, Section 8, and the accompanying decision of the Supreme Court in Baguillat versus Farías does not apply in any way whatsoever to the issue at hand. The facts, as explained in the case, are different, Madam Speaker. The case of Baguillat contemplates a situation wherein the House is in the initial organizational stage. We are not at that stage. We are in a situation that there is a subsequent leadership change not involving the entire organization of the House. So what does, or what applies? Madam Speaker? Fortunately, as part of the rules of the House will be our previous practices and traditions. Where fortunately, we are very rich in this situation. Exactly the situation we had, Madam Speaker, which was never envisioned in our rules. For after all, who, which speaker would include in the rules of the House a way for him to be removed in office? This exact situation happened three times, Madam Speaker. Yesterday was the third time. The first time was in 1999 when I was first, in my first term, when then-Speaker Villar was replaced by then-Speaker Noli Fuentebella. Personally, I was in the minority. After the voteation, I ended up still in the minority. The most recent, Madam Speaker, was on February 4, 2008, the 14th Congress. Unfortunately, almost everyone that spoke against the recognition of Congressman Suarez were not even members of the House. A lot of those who spoke up against became members at the earliest, the 15th Congress. What happened then, Madam Speaker? Exactly what happened yesterday. There were members of the minority then, specifically Congressman Marcos, Congressman Vicente Belmonte, Congressman Chepeco, and Congressman Noel, who were part of the minority, who voted for the change of the leadership, and after the voteation, they still remained in the minority. Status quo. Only the speakership was removed. Yes, it happened in a vacuum. And yes, there are precedents to this because the day after the then-majority leader recognized the then-minority, the then-majority leader recognized the then-minority leader Ronaldo Samora. He was the minority leader before the speakership change and he was still again the minority leader after the leadership change. So this has not happened. So this has not happened, this is not unique, this has happened three times. So there is legal basis, what happened, and Rule two again, Rule two, section eight, does not apply in any way whatsoever. Because how can you explain the fact that you have three contending or four contending groups using the very same law, using the very same case law, and coming up with three or four different interpretations? It only means it does not apply whatsoever. Thank you very much, and to save time, I will not entertain interpreters. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, that was only for the record, thank you.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
May we request of knowledge the following guests.
I rise on a matter of personal and collective privilege. Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker.
Can, can we at least give way to acknowledge the guests?
I rise on a matter of personal and collective privilege.
Madam Speaker, we will only acknowledge the guests, this is only a request to acknowledge the guests.
We will proceed first with acknowledgement of the guests. Majority Leader, please proceed.
Of the Honorable Strike Rivilia, Madam Speaker, these are Mayor Betty Cabal, Vice Mayor El Pijo Cabal Junior, Councilor June Cabal, and Engineer Danilo Dayola of the municipality of Hindang Lake.
The guest of Congressman Strike Rivilia is requested to stand, to be recognized. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Likewise, Madam Speaker, we request that the guests of the Honorable Chris- Jose Christopher Kit Belmonte be acknowledged. These are Kagawad Nestor Estong Reyes, President, Kagawad Fatima B. Cabanag, Executive Vice President, Kagawad Marlon Mendoza, External Vice President, Kagawad Alan S. Gonzalez, Secretary, Kagawad Laura E. Reyes, Assistant Secretary, Kagawad Arnold M. Sombrer Misana, Treasurer, Kagawad Mike P. Untalan, Assistant Treasurer, Kagawad Mike C. Mata, Auditor, Kagawad Samuel Lago, PRO, Kagawad Jocelyn Alanan, PRO, Kagawad Lord Anthony Canlas, Peace Officer, Kagawad Frederick Bigcas, Board Member, Kagawad Presilan Nueva, and Kagawad Julius Milagrosa, both Board Members of the League of Barangay Kagawad, oh, barangay, Kagawad ng District Five, Quezon City.
To the guest of Congressman Belmonte, you are welcome to the House of Representatives. Thank you for your visit. Majority Leader.
What's the pleasure of the gentleman, Madam Speaker?
Madam Speaker, I rise on a matter of personal and collective privilege.
What is the nature of the matter in which the gentleman wishes to speak of?
Well, I, I would like to make a statement on the record regarding the proper interpretation of rules on membership and minority and majority in the House.
Madam Speaker, that is not a proper subject of a personal and collective privilege.
Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
It's a personal and collec- it's a personal and collective privilege, and our rules make no such limitations on the rights of members.
There is a limitation, Madam Speaker, because he indicated already the purpose. He said he's going to render an interpretation of the rules. We, we cannot do that, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, I can, I can make any statement.
It's a, it's a point of order, if you, if you'd like to go to the rules, it's a point of order.
I am not raising a point of order, Madam Speaker.
The chair stays the ruling of the Majority Leader.
I, I am not.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, uh...
I...
Maybe suspend session, Madam Speaker.
Session is suspended. Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker. The interpretation of the rules sought by the Honorable Tinio is not in order. Why? Because we have voted yesterday, and the issue with regards to the interpretation of Rule two has been rendered moot and academic. It's not a subject of a collective and personal privilege. The body voted that particular intention is inconsistent with the action taken by the body yesterday.
Madam Speaker.
That is the position of the Majority Leader, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker.
The position of the Majority Leader is sustained. Majority Leader, please proceed.
Madam Speaker.
Under the calendar of business.
Madam Speaker.
I move that we resume consideration.
The right of, uh... Of personal and collective privilege is precisely a privilege of all members.
House Bill seven seventy-three, under... Under Committee Resolution Number seven fifty-two, and with reason. I move that we recognize the Honorable Raymond Mendoza, Madam Speaker.
Okay, Madam Speaker.
The Honorable Mendoza is recognized.
Pintulutan niyo po, kilala niyo po ang karapatan ko, otherwise, I will be concerned. I move to adjourn, Madam Speaker.
Spent.
Session is suspended. Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we recognize the Honorable Antonio Tinio for his manifestation for five minutes.
The Honorable Tinio has five minutes for his manifestation.
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Please proceed.
Thank you. I have reason on, uh, on the basis of the privilege given to me in section one or two of the rules, which allows that, uh, any member may speak on any matter, urgent matters, directly and principally affecting the duties, conduct, rights, privileges, dignity, integrity, or reputation of the House or of its members individually or collectively. I just wanted to put that on the record, Madam Speaker. Hey, Madam Speaker, si Congressman Andaya pinahintulutan po magsalita hangil sa wastong interpretasyon ayon sa kanya na ang Rule two, ng rules of the House, ito 'yung may kinalaman sa membership. Kasama na rin po rito 'yung speakership at 'yung composition ng majority at minority. At ayon po sa kanyang interpretasyon, ay, uh, na, ang interpretasyon ito ang siyang pinanigan ng mayorya ng nagkaroon ng butuhan kahapon, na hindi raw naga-apply ang Rule two sa usapin ng speakership, pagpili ng speakership, at pagdetermina kung sino, pagkilala kung sino ang minority at majority. Hindi raw naga-apply ang Rule two, sabi nila. 'Yung Rule two daw, mag-aapply lang sa simula ng kongreso, no, sa unang pagbuo ng kongreso at unang pagpili ng speaker at pagtakda kung sino ang majority at minority. Pero dahil 'yung nag-anap na pagbabago ng leadership ng House kamakailan, ay, uh, dito ang una, hindi na raw naga-apply 'yung Rule two, no? I beg to disagree, Madam Speaker. Una-una, kung babasahe mismo natin 'yung Rule two, kahit isang salita o linya rito, wala kayong makikitang sinasabi na nag-aapply lamang ang mga rules na ito sa pagpili ng speaker at pagkilala ng majority at minority sa simula ng sesyon ng kongreso. No, where does it say? No, that this will only apply to the initial organization of Congress, of the House? Wala pong sinasabing ganun, no? So, dahil walang sinasabing ganun, ang natural at wastong interpretasyon ay ang rules na ito ay mag-aapply sa lahat ng kaso ng pagpili ng speaker at pagdetermina kung sino ang nasa majority at sino ang nasa minority. Ganun lang po ka-simplion, no? So, sina Congressman Andaya po, nag-iimbento na at nagdadagdag o nag-aamienda sa rules, pag sinasabi nila na limitado lang ang rules na ito sa inisial na pagpili ng speaker. So malinaw po sa ating rules na sa lahat ng kaso ng pagpili ng speaker, ito ang rules nagagabay. Ang ibig po sabihin ito, every time, sa bawat pagkakataon na may pagpili ng speaker, magkakaroon po ng pagbuo ng bagong majority, at dahil doon, magkakaroon din ng bagong minority. There will be a reconstitution of the majority if there is an election of a new speaker. Ibig po sabihin, 'yung mayorya na naghalal kay dating Speaker Alvarez ay iba po, hindi pareho sa mayorya na naghalal kay bagong Speaker Arroyo. Napaka-obvious po niyan, no? Kahit sa bilang, kahit sa mga tao-tao, ibang-iba po yan, no? Si Speaker Alvarez, if I'm not mistaken, nahalal siya with something like a majority of two hundred, I think, two hundred three or two hundred fourteen, no? Samantalang, si Speaker Arroyo ay nahalal sa mayorya na binubo ng one hundred eighty-four. So malinaw po, sa bilang pa lang, iba na 'yung mayorya noon sa mayorya ngayon, no? At malinaw din naman, given a two hundred ninety-three po ang miembro natin, kung sakaling hindi nakaabot sa fifty percent plus one ang bumoto para kay Congresswoman Arroyo, hindi po siya nakakuha ng majority, therefore, hindi siya magiging speaker, no? So, 'yan po ang ibig sabihin niyan. Kailangan makapagpakita ng bagong mayorya ang sino man bago siya maging speaker, at ganun po ang nangyari. Nung nag, nung gabing, nung gabing yon, nang nahalal si Speaker Arroyo bilang bagong speaker. So may bagong mayorya, no? Iba na po ang mayoryang ito sa mayorya nung nakaraan, at dahil iba ang mayorya, iba na rin ang minorya, no? Malinaw po, nakasama sa one hundred eighty-four na bumuo sa majority ni, na sumusuporta kay ngayong Speaker Arroyo, kasama po dyan si Congressman Dani Suarez, no? So hindi na po siya bahagi ng minorya, hindi po nating masasabing 'yung pagkahalal niya, 'yung, 'yung pagboto niya para kay Congresswoman Arroyo ay hindi makakaapekto sa posisyon niya bilang minority leader sa ilalim ni Speaker Alvarez, no? So 'yun po ang nais lang po nating idehin dito, at madagdag ko na rin po, no? Ibig sabihin nito, kung meron ang bagong mayorya, nalusaw na 'yung dating mayorya, nalusaw na rin 'yung dating minorya. Mabanggit ko na po, kaya rin po, para sa atin, wala pong maaring tuntungan 'yung posisyon ng ibang mga kasamahan natin, lalo na si Congressman Eugene De Vera, na sinasabi niya na nananatili siya, siya ang, siya ang tanging natira sa minority, kaya siya ang lihimong minority leader. Lalusaw na rin po yon, no, na nagkaroon ng halalan para sa bagong speaker, may bago ng majority, may bagong minority, no? Tama po 'yung sinasabi ng marami, only in the Philippines, meron po tayong minority leader na bahagi at pinili ng mayorya, no? At dahil 'yan, sa baluktot, mali, at di makatwirang interpretasyon ng ating mga rules. 'Yun lang po ang gusto nating idehin, maraming salamat po, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may we request of knowledge also, uh... Okay, Madam Speaker, may we move to refer the speech of the Honorable Tinio to the Rules Committee.
The speech of the Honorable Tinio is referred to the Rules Committee. Majority Leader.
We have special visitors, Madam Witnesses, who need to be acknowledged. They are Mrs. Jean Rodriguez, the wife of Congressman Maxie Rodriguez, uh, Mrs. Janice Salimbango, the wife of Congressman Benur Salimbango, Mrs. Lauren Nepal Haloshos, the wife of Congresswoman Haloshos, Mrs. Dolly Alvarez, the mother of Congress, of, uh, the Deputy Speaker Mercedes Alvarez, and last but not least, Madam Speaker, Mrs. Stacy Daza, one of the wives of Congressman Raoul Daza.
We welcome our dear congressional spouses to the House of Representatives. Thank you for your visit. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, move that we recognize you. Yes, what is the pleasure of the Honorable Atienza?
We would like to ask for three minutes to bring to the attention of Congress something that may affect everyone's right with regards to our driving our own cars.
The Honorable Atienza has three minutes.
Salamat po. Etupi kailangan dalingko dito sa ating kaalamahan. Ang isang nabubuo...
Ang isang nabubuo at namumuong patakaran sa paggamit ng ating mga lansangan, na paggamit ng ating sariling sasakyan. Sapagat ako po'y nagmonitor ng meeting ng mga alkalde, na ang MMDA, Metro Manila Development Authority, ang siyang namumuno. Narinig ko po 'yung sinabi ng General Manager ng MMDA, na ikinuconsider nila na ating mga sasakyan ay hindi napadaanin sa Edsa kapagka isa lang ang sakay. Madalas salita, kung nagmamaneho si Congressman Daza, siyang magisa, ay baka hindi napadaanin sa Edsa dahil magisa siya eh. Tayo, ganun din. Tayo, ganun din. Pag hindi natin kinontra ito ngayon, at malaman ang lahat, na eto na naman karapatan natin ang aalisin sa halip na magtrabaho, ito mga kinukuhan, ay baka bandang huli, tayo po naman ang magulat na huli. Abang tayo'y nagdi-dibate rito sa mga pakisang makabubuti sa bayan, sila po naman ay nagpaplano, kung paano tayo aalisan ng ating kapangyarihan. We admit that there is a traffic problem. It is so acute that it hampers the economy because government has failed, has failed to address the problem effectively. Now, they would like us, as sabi nga nung GM ng MMDA, tinitignan po namin ang bawat kotse. Madalas, isa lang ang nakasakay, i-nagda-drive. Tama. Eh, kung si Congressman Salud ay nagmamaneho ng kotse niya, di isa lang ang sakay, eh, 'yan ay hindi tama. We have to address the problem to reduce the volume of vehicles using the main highway of Edsa. At masakit po ito. Dapat sana'y makisama ang lahat, sabi niya. Eto'y para sa atin. Eto'y hinihingan ko ng sakripisyo ang bawat Pilipino, na tayo ay wag nang gumamit ng Edsa kung magisalan sa kotse. Ang tanong ko po'y, 'yun po ba ang nila nakikita? Tayo na naman ang sisihin sa problema ang hindi nila inasikaso? Eto lang po ba nakikita nila solusyon? Binigyan na tayo ng coding. Ngayon, nabibigyan naman tayo ng limitation of our right to drive our own cars. Eh, paano 'yung walang, walang driver? Paano 'yung isa lang ang driver? Kaya eto po'y dinadala ko sa inyong kaalaman, baka alam mo ba siito'y formal ruling na ng Metro Manila Council? Nasasabihin nila ito'y patakaran na kailangan sundin. Before it's too late, this representation will take action, so that this kind of a plan will not pursue. At tayo na naman ang pagdusain. Ang aking hinihiling po at panawagan sa kanila, General Manager Jojo Garcia, at 'yung ating Chairman Danny Lim, mag-aral kayong mabuti sa inyong tungkulin na babigyan ng solusyon ng traffic condition na hindi aalisan naman ang karapatan ang pangkaraniwang Pilipino. Sinasabi ninyo, dumaaan sa mga side street. Hindi po madadaanan ang mga side streets kadalasan po barado. Sabi ng mga mayors, sa pulong nila kahapon, 'yun daw ang solusyon. Ang mukha ko po sa kanila, linisin ninyo mga side street. Aalisin nyo mga ilegal dyan. Bigyan nyo po ng daan upang magamit natin ang mga alternative routes papunta po sa ating paruroonan. It is not enough to appeal to our patriotic sense. We all are patriotic. Sila po ay sasabihin kong sila nagkukulang ng pagmamahal sa bayan. Wala po sila nakita kundi 'yung parusahan ang karamihan. Samantalang, tuloy-tuloy ang ilegal sa lansangan. I am pointing out, and I will continue pointing out, the illegal, illegally situated terminals along Edsa. Forty-seven of them are still operating, and they are not doing anything. They are merely saying, "This is a problem that we cannot just solve." The provincial buses that fly Edsa continue to multiply, and they cannot say anything but it's very difficult to remove these buses because people would like to take their bus right to the province along Edsa. Napupunta ko po, ito'y pupunta ako sa ating Kongreso. Pag wala pong bus at nililinis nila ang Edsa, mabilis po ang gyay natin. From my home in Manila up to here, it takes me only about forty minutes. Pero pagka puno ng bus, at pinakakawala po nila ito at certain times of the week, certain days of the week, dalawang oras ang pinakamababang guguguli natin sa lansangan. Hindi ko po ma- makakalimutang banggitin pa ulit to, ulit. 'Yung po terminal sa Bundia, Taft Avenue, ay ilegal. Ilegal as ilegal. Bakit? 'Yung lansangan ang ginagawa ng terminal ng mga sampung bus companies. Hindi pa nila nakikita ito. Nobody sees this in the government of Pasay and the government of Metro Manila. I call their attention to it because before you ask us to sacrifice again, you do your job first. Magtrabaho kayo, at wag kaming, tignan ninyo. Tignan ninyo ang korapsyon sa lansangan. Tignan ninyo ang pagpapatakbo ng traffic ng inyong mga enforcer. Tignan ninyo ang kurakot na nangyayari araw-araw. Palagay ko, bago ninyo payralin 'yung ganyang uri na baluktot na pag-iisip na kami na naman nahihihiga nyo, na sakripisyo, mahiya-hiya kayo. Sapagat nakakahiya, na tignan ninyo, ang iba, samantalang kayo, ay hindi nagtatrabaho. Magaling lang kayo sa radio, magaling kayo sa press release, hindi kayo magaling sa trabaho. 'Yan po ang aking panawagan sa inyo, before it's too late, let us all act as I will file a resolution to counter this kind of a measure. You cannot continue depriving the use of motor vehicles by depriving individual. Lahat tayo ay nag-iisip magkaroon ng kanyas sariling kotse. Nag-iipon tayo, kayo po'y nakabili na, ay hindi niyo magagamit sapagat pinagbabawal. 'Yung isa lang ang sakay na isasakyan. So, I am appealing to the members of Congress, support this resolution, and we will definitely make a stand that the government should do its job. Kung sinasabi niyong ilegal, ilegal ang terminal, tapusin po ninyo ang usapin, at wag niyo kami nating tignan. The more you look at us and stare at us and deprive us of our rights, the more the problem will grow, and the economy will suffer. Maraming-maraming salamat po dito sa pagkakataong ito.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, move that we uh, refer the speech of the Honorable Atienza to the Committee on Rules, so move.
The speech of the Honorable Atienza is referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we proceed with unfinished business. Madam Speaker, I move that we resume consideration of House Bill 7773 on second reading. Our uh, status, parliamentary status, as we are in the period of sponsorship and debate, I move that we recognize the author of said bill, or the sponsor of the said bill, the Honorable Raymond Mendoza of Partilist DUCP, so move, Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the House Bill, and the Chairperson of the Committee is recognized to sponsor the measure.
House Bill Number 7773, An Act Institutionalizing the Pantawid Pamilyang Pilipino Program to Reduce Poverty and Promote Human Capital Development and Providing Funds Therefore.
Madam Speaker, move that we recognize the Honorable Arlene Brosas of Partilist Gabriela for her interpolation, so move, Madam Speaker.
The lady is recognized to interpolate the chair, the chair, the sponsor, the sponsor of the measure.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Will the sponsor? Will the sponsor yield to some clarificatory questions?
Yes, Madam Speaker, we're ready. Good afternoon.
Yes, Mister Sponsor? Ilang katanungan lang po kaugnay dito sa uh, bill na ito. Sa mga nakaraang hearing ng House Committee on Poverty alleviation, binanggit ng DSWD na mayroong third wave ng evaluation ng Pantawid Pamilyang Pilipino Program, 4-Piece, at kamustahan ang mga benifisiaryo ng 4-Piece. Ano ang update dito, at ano po ang mga major findings ng ahensya? Ah, ano po ang- Pa- paiiksihin ko po. Ano ang findings sa assessment ng 4-Piece since implementation ito ng 2008?
Uh, Madam Speaker, in behalf of the Chair and being a co-author of the measure, can I be allowed to, to address the interpolation?
Please proceed.
Well, uh, based po sa ongoing, uh, the third assessment of DSWD, the release of that assessment po ay mangyayari pa ngayong November, no? So, ongoing pa po 'yung sinasabi nating uh, assessment.
So, Madam Speaker, wala pa po tayong datos, pero magpapasa na tayo ng batas. Kaugnay dito. For example po, sa mga sinasabing nakatawid, no? Ano na po 'yung kalagayan ng apat na milyong transitioning families na rinere-report ng DSWD ng nakaraan?
Dun po sa mga naging assessment, no? Pagtatasa, meron tayo ng 2012, ng 2014, at dun ho sa first wave po, no? Ng uh, assessment, ang sinasabi po dun sa pagtatasa ay malakiho 'yung naitulong sa mga uh, beneficies, specifically funds released, no? For education and health, no? And for the second wave, uh, the targeted beneficiaries, uh, dun ho sa pagtatasa ay mas maraming mga nanay 'yung nagpa- nagavail, no? Nung prenatal care, and seven in ten births attributed sa, sa 4-Piece po ay kadahilanan po nito ay underho sa programa ng 4-Piece, no? So, ibig sabihin, uh, dun ho sa second wave of assessment, napatunayan na mas maraming mga nanay ang nakilahok sa programa at regular na nagpapa-checkup, at uh, pito sa sampung birth, no? Ay because regular po silang uh, nagpapatingin, no? Sa ating mga health facilities. And by extending aid from home to school, it remains on track with keeping our schoolchildren healthy and in school. It also promotes 'yung programa po ng mga so-called facility-based deliveries. Uh, it also improves children's access to healthcare services. And especially that we are now transitioning to the K-12 program, mas marami po ang gustong mag-aral, mag-enroll for secondary education, meaning uh, 'yung intent, no? Or mga nag-enroll na rin sa senior high school. At of course, investment in education, napatunayan din po sa assessment na mas maraming household ang nag-invest, no? Uh, for the education of their children. And in fact, sa agriculture sector po, no? Uh, may notable decline daw sa agricultural labor, sa kadahilanan na 'yung 4-Piece program, instead 'yung mga rural household ay 'yung mga bata hindi nila pagpaparalin, okay, kasi tutulong sa labor, agricultural labor, sila po ay mas pumapasok, no? Sa, sa skelahan, rather than take on uh, jobs sa agriculture sector, na alam naman natin napakababa ang pasahod, no? So, so, meaning, it could be seen as uh, as for the agriculture sector, parang bumaba 'yung labor, no? Employment dahil nga mas marami ang uh, nag-aaral, no? And of course, 'yung karamihan po sa mga na-assist, no? Ang na-assist ay, ang general po na pananaw nung sa mga na-assess, ay mas gusto nila, 'yung mga magulang, gusto nilang mag-aspire, no? For a better future for their children. So, 'yun po 'yung mga, mga summary, no? Nung pagtatasa, at we have, kumbaga segmented, no? Assessment, uh, like impact on education for three-to-five-year-old children, six-to-eleven-year-old children, twelve-to-fourteen-year-old children. So, meaning, ang dito sa impact by, by year atsya by grade mataaso, no? So, like for three-to-five-year-old children, okay? Tumaas po ng seven-to-eleven percentage points. 'Yung six-to-eleven, tumaas ng five percentage points, okay? And for twelve-to-fourteen-year-old children, tumaas ng six percentage points. At eight percentage points po naman, uh, dito sa, in general, no? For all the children. Now, on the impact po sa health, okay? Uh, the summary of the assessment pointed out that this, there is increased availability of basic health, health services and reduce severe stunting for young children compared to non-CCT beneficiaries, with similar demographic and socioeconomic characteristics. So, again, even in the health, the impact on health, uh, there's a segmented, no? Assessment made, uh, on the 4-Piece, uh, there's a lowering of a severe stunting of ten percentage points for children six months to three years old. Eight percentage points higher take-up sa deworming. So, ibig sabihin, 'yung mga magulang, uh, mas pumupunta sa mga health centers at nagpapa-deworm, no? For children under fifteen, tumaas by eight percentage points. 'Yung intake of vitamins ng mga, mga bata ay tumaas din, no? Like vitamin A supplement for children under six, increased by twelve percentage points. Iron supplements, again, for children under six, by twelve percentage points. And for weight monitoring, dahil nga mas maraming sa mga CCT beneficiaries ay regular na pumupunta sa ating mga health facilities, there's twenty percentage points higher incidence of uh, uh, 'yung mga magulang na nagpapa uh, timbang sa kanilang anak, and thirteen, thirteen percentage points higher incidence for seeking treatment of childhood diseases. So, ito po 'yung lumabas sa mga first, second assessments from 2012 to 2014, uh, and ongoing po 'yung third uh, wave of assessment, and hopefully by November lalabas. But, again, Madam Speaker, uh, what we're seeing here, because the Pantawid program has been here since 2008, and since 2012 ay ginawa itong full blast, uh, there is even a 2015, uh, assessment, no? Prepared by uh, the World Bank, no? Uh, the State of Social Safety Nets Report of 2015, and they look into the situation of the 4-Piece in the Philippines, okay? And let me quote a portion of that report. Ang sinabi po dito, poverty in the Philippines is a dynamic phenomenon, and many households move in and out of poverty during the year due to factors like calamities, droughts, or the advent of the lean seasons. The poor and vulnerable in the Philippines benefit from what is today one of the largest and best-targeted social safety net programs in the world. So, under this assessment, in terms of specifics, the State of Social Safety Net's report pointed out that CCT programs account now globally for 50% of beneficiaries in social safety net programs and are now present in 64 countries. And the Philippines has been cited as one of the leading implementors, initiators of this social safety net program. So, yun ho 'yung mga, mga pagtatasah na nangyari sa kasalukuyan.
Okay, Madam Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, sinabi niyo po 'yung mga specific impacts, pero 'yung third wave ay ongoing pa, tama po ba? Ongoing pa ang third wave ng evaluation? So, hindi pa natin makita kung ilan na ba talaga 'yung nakatawid? Ilan na ba 'yung nakaahon sa kahirapan? Bago po tayo magle-legislate ng isang batas, hindi ba dapat makuha natin ang buong-boong 'yung impact sa ating bayan ng ganitong klase ng batas?
'Yung, 'yung third wave po ng assessment kasi, ito na po, kasi sabi natin na generational 'yung itong programa, hindi naman to overnight, because...
Yes, for example, Mr. Sponsor, ilan ang bilang ngayon ng listahanan? Mula 2015, ilan na po ba 'yung updating na nagawa ng DSWD kaugnay dyan?
Well, dun ho sa, of course, we have 4.4 million na nasa listahan or meaning covered ng 4 Piece, okay? Ang sinasabi ho natin, itohong sa exclusion, no, ng mga nasa listahan, okay, ay meron umabot na mga 230,000 families that were excluded since 2014 because of, siguro, problems sa, hindi talaga sila dapat nakasama. Now, on the other side, in terms of, sinasabi ho nating mga transitioning households, no, okay, 'yung nakaangat, no, mula dun sa sinasabi nating pagiging extreme, extremely poor, okay, household, meron hong umangat ng 1,315,477 households as of the 2014, no, the 2014, ito 'yung second wave ng assessment. Of course, hindi kaagad naangat 'yung 4.4 million, but the 1,315,477, sorry, it's 2015 numbers, no. So, ito po 'yung talagang na-assess, no, na umangat from extremely poor. They're still poor, but nasa near poor na category, but still vulnerable. Kasi ang sabi natin, 'yung kahirapan, pwede kang umangat at bumaba, no. So, ang sa sitwesyon dito, okay, napaaangat natin from an extremely poor na classification, umangat sa near poor, but the kulatilya ay, the remaining of the 4.4 million ay nandun pa rin sa sitwesyon. So, 1.3 million in a way is significant, no, if we look at the nature of poverty na maraming factors.
Madam Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, naniniwala po ako dyan eh, nagbabago-bago 'yung, 'yung kalagayan na sinasabi nating extremely poor and poor at ano pa, no? Pero mas delikado nga po ngayon dahil pumaluna ng 5.7% ang inflation rate, ngayon lang hulyo. Tapos para sa mahirap na pamilya, walang ibang kahulugan nito kundi mas kakaunting pagkain sa kanilang mesa dahil hindi naman tumataas 'yung kita at ayunan ng gobyerno. Tapos, ano ang pag-aaral ng ahensya ng, well, ng DSWD kaugnay dito? At ano ang implikasyon nito kapagka nagbibigay nga tayo ng unconditional cash transfer ng UCT? May programa tayong ganyan, pero hindi naman kakarumpot lang yun. Tapos sumisirit 'yung presyo ng bilihin at serbisyo. Parang, di ba, mahirap po 'yung kalagayan na ganun?
Ah, tama po kayo, no? May sitwesyon tayo ngayon na tumatama 'yung inflation sa D and E class, no? Pero ang sabi natin, ang naging sagot ng pamahalaan dyan ay 'yung UCT, no, unconditional cash transfer, which is different dito sa CCT na program, which is a social safety net, no? Now, the direct subsidies, unconditional subsidies, I think, na-release ho ng isang bigayan niya, no, ng gobyerno. I don't have the figures, pero it was released one time, no? At in fact, sa, sa UCT, of course, kasama rin dyan 'yung mga naging, or nasa mga 4 Piece, or mga non-4 Piece beneficiaries but still are considered the vulnerable poor. Kasama ho sa UCT, unconditional cash transfer, may 600 dry subsidy, meron hong 200 voucher for transportation. In a way, if we look at the inflation rate at paano tumama, sa NCR, medyo, kumbaga, nakusyon 'yung impact because much of the UCT went through the, mas dito sa NCR. But the rest of the country, of course, highest nami inflation rate will be regions like ARMM. Pero again, as I've said, itohong sa conditional cash transfer sa 4 Piece, all the more na kailangan nating ma-institutionalize dahil nga, again, as I've said, poverty ay maraming dimension at saka iba't ibang level of intervention, no? So, itong, itong CCT is just one, one aspect of intervention. Marami pa dapat, no? And in fact, may mga panukala that we also provide social insurance for the poor. So, meaning, like mga rural household, agricultural household families, pag tumama 'yung bagyo, extreme weather condition, siempre pwedeng bumaba 'yung kanilang income, 'yung income poverty nila will be affected. 'Yung, not just the crop insurance, but when I say social insurance, it will be another form of, of support for social safety net. So, sinasabi ho ng, ng representasyon ito na, of course, inaamin natin na hindi lang dapat CCT, 'yung programa. Pero ang CCT ay malaki ang naging tulong na maiahon natin from extremely poor to near poor na sitwesyon 'yung ating, more or less, mga 10 million household na nasa kahirapan.
Madam Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, kung maaalala po natin sa mga reports ng COA, lumalabas po dun, ano na ba 'yung nangyari sa assessment ng unclaimed cash grants, unreleased cash, mga issue sa land bank, mga ghost beneficiaries na naging malaking issue, no, kaugnay sa 4 Piece? Sinasabi natin na gusto nating tulungan 'yung extremely poor, pero 'yung system na ito ng, ng 4 Piece ng nakaraan ay bat-bat din ng mga ganitong issues. Ano na ba ang aksyon dito? Meron po ba tayong sagot kaugnay dito?
Well, dun po sa programa, no, alam natin na ang downloading ng funds, no, may mga areas po na, okay, na may mga accounts, no, na, of course, may sinasabi na, na may accounts, na may... Well, of the observation ng COA last December 31, 2017, meron daw 1,889,994 accounts na unwithdrawn or non-moving, no? But based ho dun sa, sa bago, no? May, okay, okay, okay. Based ho dun sa DSWD, na ginawang validation dun sa, parang finlock ng COA, ang totoo lang na may mga unwithdrawn or non-moving accounts ay 83,196 accounts na may balance above 500 and beyond 181 days, okay? And dun ho sa remaining, dun sa 1.889,000 accounts, mga 1,806,798 accounts, 'yung may balance of less than 500. So, in general, of course, may kailangan ka ring i-maintain na, na balance dun sa iyong account. But in other areas po, OTC ang ginagamit, no? Dalawa kasi 'yan eh, meron kang card, cash card, and 'yung isa OTC. So, ibig sabihin, 'yung mga, 'yung DSWD directly na namimigay, no? At karamihan ho dyan ay, meron hong, sabi natin dun sa mga areas na, na in a way, hindi talaga nasiservisyoan ng mga financial institutions, mga bangko. Pero kasama ho dun sa mechanism, may pinulin din na bagong financial institution, the Philippine Veterans Bank na tumulong dun sa, sa distribution, sa mga cash cards na mobilize din po 'yung, well, mga COO of banks, 'yung mga other, no, ng mga remittance centers, no? So, so yun po 'yung ginawa, no? So that mas comprehensive or mas maramihan, no, 'yung pwedeng maging conduwit para po dun sa pag-release ng pondo.
Madam Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, ano na pong nangyari sa sinasabi ng COA na unliquidated amount of 7,689 billion as of December 2016? Para sa period po ng 2012 to 2016?
Well, dun ho sa sinasabing unliquidated, again, that, sinasabi po, 'yung sinabi ko kanina ang datos, hingil sa, may mga natira, no, 'yung 500 peso and below, hindi ina-withdrawn, no? Kasi nga, of course, 'yung iba, karamihan naman ng mga household beneficiaries, no, hindi rin naman kaagad dyan na magsi-zero, kumbaga, 'yung uubusi nila, no, 'yung kanilang, 'yung ni-release, no, for the, for the CCTs, no? So, ang sitwesyon, well, it's there, nandyan ho sa mga accounts 'yan ng mga household beneficiaries, hindi o ibig sabihin na, na unliquidated dahil hindi nagastos, no? Ang sinasabi lang na, na monitor, na nandyan 'yung mga accounts, no, mga karamihan ay less than 500 dun sa kanilang mga accounts, no? So, but kung itotal mo ngayon, malaki, no? Pero when you break it down, 'yung so-called 7 billion, itohong 'yung mga, nando na sa mga, sa mga accounts nung 4 Piece beneficiaries. Hindi nga lang na, na gasto pa or na-withdrawn.
Ayon po sa bill, sino-sino ang magpapatupad ng 4 Piece CCT?
Well, dun ho sa, sa bill, it's the lead agency ay 'yung DSWD, no? In terms of, okay, in terms of the, well, the standardized targeting system 'yung ginawa, no, na pag-target, revalidation of the targeted beneficiaries every three years, no? So, in a way, the overall supervision and where the program and the budget will be lodged is with DSWD. But again, there are two other agencies that are also part of the program, the Department of Health, no, dahil nga dun sa, this is also a health incentive program. At saka 'yung Department of Education, dahil nga dun sa pagpapapasok sa mga eskwelahan ng, ng mga bata. Now, for the monitoring, meron hong mga advisory councils that shall be created at the municipal, regional, and national level composed of representatives from NAPSI, NEDA, DBM, Department of Finance, the LGU concerned, as well as accredited NGOs, no? And of course, regular monitoring will be done by DSWD. Now, there's also a provision in the proposed bill to have an independent monitoring committee at the municipal, regional, and national levels to complement the monitoring activities of DSWD. 'Yung IMC po will be composed of representatives from the private sector and civil society organizations. So, these are the, sinasabi ho nating mga stakeholders in the implementation of the PantaWid. Now, on the role of Congress, no, dahil nga gawin natin ma-institutionalize ito, meron din po tayong itinalaga na 4 Piece Oversight Committee, Joint Congressional Oversight Committee, to be headed by Chairs of the House Committee on Poverty alleviation as well as the Social Welfare, Social Justice Welfare and Rural Development Committee of the Senate. So, itohong 'yung mga mechanisms, no, to monitor, to deliver the program services. And we also tap the, the private sector and CSOs, no, to do an independent monitoring.
Alam niyo po ang sinasabi ng COA sa DSWD, ang kanyang suggestion ay ipastack ang investigation, reassessment of the eligibility of concerned beneficiaries and immediately delist ineligible beneficiaries. At marami pa po siyang sinabi kaugnay dito, no, para so as 'yung funds ay hindi ma-waste, no? At marami pang iba. 'Yung, ibig sabihin po, kung, kung ang pangunahin ay DSWD, may capacity ba siyang ganito kung hindi niya pa natatapos 'yung third wave na assessment niya? At marami pang iba na kailangan asikasuhin katulad nga ng unreleased cash at mga issue sa bangko?
Well, again, dun ho sa, 'yung monitoring, ay 'yung assessment kasi, by phases, yun, no? So, yun nga, 'yung third phase ay ginagawa at expected that November will be released, no? But in terms of the capacity, 'yung DSWD is, well, of course, during the bill's deliberation, ay, ang sinabi naman po na they have the capacity. And in fact, in terms of the existing programs of DSWD sa ngayon, itohong 4 Piece talaga 'yung pangunahin, no, primary na social safety net program, no? And, well, based na rin sa assessment, okay, ang critical dito will also be the organizing of the beneficiaries themselves, no? Dahil nga, ang role ng DSWD at the level ng municipal, may mga municipal link, okay? And the municipal link ay kailangan nilang regular na pulungin 'yung mga parent leaders. At 'yung mga parent leaders naman, meron rin hong mga kagrupo yan, no, ng mga household beneficiaries.
Madam Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, napakahalaga nung papel nung DSWD. Samantalang ang kanyang... Samantalang ang kanyang mga trabaho, empleyado, empleyado sa kasalukuyan ay humaharap din ano, sa parang 90% sa DSWD ay hindi regular or nakamoa agreement. So 'yung magpapatupad po mismo ng ano, ng naehensya, ay may usapin pa sa empleyo o sa trabaho. Kaya parang, di ba?
Guilty, Your Honor. Ibig sabihin, of course, iba 'yung, well, the security of tenure of the four-piece or the CCT na mga program implementors dahil nga dun ho sa ating struktura, sa ahensya, sa burokrasya, kung wala ho 'yan sa regular na plantilia, so, sila ay mananatiling JO, no? Mananatili sila program. Mga job order, mga programs, no? So of course, we don't want that, no? Na ganong situation na hindi klaro, no? But again, under sa four-piece, itong, yeah, institutionalization ng four-piece, no? And in fact, ang kulatilya ho natin dito ay, 'yung four-piece ay mananatili, no? Until 60% of the extremely poor, no? Mga households ay maiangat natin sa ganong kalagayan. So until, until na more than, sabihin natin hindi na-achieve 'yung ganong target, no? Patuloy 'yung programa. So with this law, of course, another round of discussions, negotiations with DBM about absorbing the personnel if ever na ma-institutionalize.
Madam Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, nagpalabas sila ng circular, di ba? Ang CSE at saka ang DBM ng kamakailan na parang tilabaga agency hiring din ang gagawin. So nakakabahala din po ito sa isang banda. Pero on another topic po, um, ng, meron po ako ditong minutes of the meeting ng Committee on Poverty alleviation, kung saan. This is the minutes of the third regular meeting of the Committee on Poverty alleviation held on March 14, 2017, Tuesday, 9:30 a.m. at the Speaker Billiard Hall, House of Reps. Dito po nakalagay na, napagkasunduan natin na magkaroon muna, no? Ng program outcomes onsite. Basahin ko po 'yung ano, 'yung last part ng ano. At this juncture, upon motion of myself, Julie Second dead by Honorable Castro, the body decided to defer further consideration of the four-piece measures and other related bills and to undertake the proposed roundtable with four-piece stakeholders and then delve on the program outcomes onsite. Kasi gusto nga po natin makita at malaman kung ano 'yung impact dun sa mga beneficiaries natin. 'Yung totoo po na kalagayan nila. So what happened to this, doon po sa, and meron po kami ng House Resolution 464, kung maaalala ko, na nagsasabi na 'yun nga po, para mapag-aralan ng mabuti ay magkaroon muna ng program outcomes onsite, na hearing.
Well, as far as I know, the committee tackled that resolution. At ang dun ho sa resolution na 'yun ay sinabay natin, no? Dito sa discussions nga, in-integrate sa institutionalization. And let me go back to the earlier question about workers, basedo dito sa batas, no?
Madam Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, gusto ko pong malaman, categorically ay sagutin 'yung tanong ko. Anong nangyari doon sa suggestion natin ng magkaroon ng onsite hearing?
Well, the committee decided po, Madam Speaker, not to conduct anymore, no? 'Yung mga regional assessment.
So wala nga po, walang, hindi nangyari na magkaroon ng onsite hearing sa mga lugar.
Let me go back to the job order, no, the issue. Dito po sa ating batas, meron ho 3,896, no, as of now, no? Na mga working with the, with the four-piece program, okay? At ito po ang mariregularize, no? So ibig sabihin, by January of 2019, if the law will be passed, 3,896 na involved na, sa ngayon ay nakamoa memorandum of agreement or naka-JO na mga workers sa four-piece ang mariregularize.
Actually po 'yan 'yung tanong namin eh, kasi di ba, um, ang DSWD, ang strategy for poverty alleviation ay four-piece, SLP, SOC, PEN, meron pang iba, no? Para ma-achieve niya 'yung 14% poverty incidence throughout the country, kailangan niya ng ipatibang interventions at mga quantifiable results. 'Yung major issue po, sinabi natin, ang workforce ay 90% contractual or under MOA arrangements.
Ito na po 'yung mariregularize. And in fact, during the.
Sa agency po.
Ande, DSWD, no? Kasi ang nasa budget ho ng 2019, proposal ng DSWD.
Baka kailangan po nating i-review, no? Kung may expertise ang DSWD natin dito, kung magko-contract ba sila ng mga private groups? At ano ang mga gagawin nila para ma-deliver 'yung mga poverty alleviation and services na gagawin nila?
Siguro po, Madam Speaker, dun ho sa mga, mga iko-contract out, 'yung mga tutulong dun sa mga FDS, Family Development Sessions, no? Ang, dun ho 'yan, sa mga region, no, sa baba, no? 'Yung kung sino 'yung pwedeng mag-assist, no? So it's still also part of the program. So meaning, may matatap, no? But you have to base it on, again, the KOA guidelines of contracting out consultancy or services, no? Dahil nga stringent din 'yung rules, no? If you contract out consultancy services like to NGOs and other private sector entities, no? But again, 'yung tulungan under sa four-piece program, no? Ay definitely itatap 'yung LGOs, matatap din 'yung NGOs and the private sector.
Kaya, Madam Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, mahalaga talaga 'yung sinasabi nating third wave eh, na what was the outcome at ano po 'yung naging output nito? Ano po 'yung naging nationwide survey natin dito? Saka ugnay sa impact nitong CCT, sa nitong four-piece sa mga beneficiaries. On another topic po, last. Na meron pong ano, nabanggit na merong fungible o hindi project-specific ang loan ng ADB at World Bank na may kaugnayan sa four-piece. Kung gayon, magkano po talaga 'yung napunta sa four-piece mula sa 850 million combined loan mula sa ADB at World Bank?
Madam Speaker, sorry for that interregnum, no? Well, the World Bank loan, nung kinontract out po 'yun, ay pumasok 'yan as part, no, of the overall na loan ng NG, ng National Government, no? But the four-piece program is basically a GAA program, gaa-funded na program. So hindi ho mati-trace, no? Kasi pumasok 'yung loan, so wala ho ganong traceability dahil nga, I mean, hindi mo ma-breakdown. Dahil nga nilonyon specific na may amount tutulong sa CCT. Pero once it enters the fund of the National Government, 'yung total allocation for DSWD's four-piece, dun na ho na-integrate 'yung World Bank loan na 'yun.
Madam Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, baka kailangan muna nating maging transparent doon para malaman din ang mga kababayan natin kung saan talaga napunta 'yung budget na iyon na sinasabi natin na mula sa 850 billion combined loan mula sa ADB at World Bank. Ilan talaga 'yung napunta sa four-piece, no?
Well, ito ho 'yung napunta dun sa 4.4 million, no, na households. Hindi lang natin ma-segregate kung sino dun sa 4.4 million, di ba? Ang tumanggap ng World Bank or 'yung regular na napunta. But again, sa budgeting kasi, the amount of the program funds ay basically through the GAA, no? Wala ho siyang separate na, na parang, parang separate item, no, na World Bank. So, so, again, as I've stated, four-piece can be considered as partially funded by loans from World Bank, from, and ADB from 2010 to 2015, 2016 to 2019. But the bulk of CCT funding is from the government revenues, no? And the World Bank and ADB loans, presumably, no? Kasi wala naman exact figures, not more than 14% of the gaa allocated na budget for four-piece. 'Yung supposed, presumably na kulatilya is that, 'yun nga, as I've explained earlier, 'yung loan na 'yan pumasok sa general fund ng ating gobyerno.
And there is no way para malaman natin 'yan, ang specifics niya?
'Yun po 'yung kuwan eh, 'yun po 'yung all loans, no, na pumapasok. It's really included sa GF unless pag merong pumasok 'yan, kasi pumasok 'yan as regular fund, funding of the agency. Now, pag I-SPF mo 'yan, Special Purpose Fund, 'yun 'yung pwedeng, kumbaga, ma-itimize or ma.
So po pwede, po pwede, there's a way para malaman.
No, kung ang loan na 'yan ay pasok dun sa mga special purpose funds na, na sa ating gaa, no? Ito 'yung mga automatic appropriation at ibang mga SPF. But again, as I've mentioned, kung ang mga programs ng mga national agencies ay nasa regular fund or regular budget, the loans that will be incurred for specific programs papasok talaga siya sa regular budget. And it is disbursed, no, as part ng regular budget ng agency under sa gaa.
Pero, Madam Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, di ba dapat i-obligate natin na makita talaga natin kung saan napunta, no? We owe it to the people na malaman exactly kung paano 'yun.
Yeah, I think if the loan agreement would specifically point out that it should be treated, no, as a special purpose fund or something na hindi mo sinasama sa regular budget, no? Pwede mong matingnan, ma-monitor. But again, even sa ating mga agency budgets, kung titingnan din natin, no? Most of the programs are talagang nasa regular budget, no? And kailan niyang dumaan sa appropriation, sa kongreso. Hindi 'yung parang reserve fund, no, or sinasabi nating separate na fund, no? Na nilalagay specific only for that. Unless, sabihin natin na it's an infrastructure project, na very clear 'yung outcomes, very clear kung saan siya ilalagay, no? Meron ganong delineation, no? Like for DPWH, may mga roads, no, National Road Program funded by World Bank, but very specific kung saan ilalagay 'yung NRP na 'yun, anong district, anong province, no?
Kaya po mas nakakabahala 'yan ngayon dahil baka magamit for patronage politics, di ba? Alam naman po natin, kada pagmalapit na ang eleksyon, di ba? Pag hindi natin malaman kung saan talaga napunta o ginamit for four-piece, 'yun po 'yung ano eh, 'yun po 'yung tanong eh, di ba? Kaya mas transparent, mas accountable, mas okay.
Well, as I've mentioned, the all social protection programs, no? Generally, ito ho 'yung tulong, no? Either as a form of subsidy, an incentive, conditional cash grant like the CCT, ito po ay regular agency or regularly funded programs. So parang ang nangyari ngayon, syempre hinihingi ng support, ng ayuda, but this one, again, ay kailangan dumaan sa proseso, no? At ang proseso nga, existing process, ay siya ay papasok, no? Sa general fund ng ating government, no? And I think that's also established sa ating, sa general accounting principles, 'yung sa budget, no, sa, well, we have the laws on budgeting, so, so pumapasok siya. Now, of course, transparency, ang sinasabi natin dito, 'yung World Bank ADB loan, no? May, meron naman hong, okay, meron namang, okay, breakdown, no? And how much is the interest, no? And, okay, and of course, very specific na po ito, no? We can provide the interpolant, no, ng copy of this breakdown.
Madam Speaker, Mr. Chair, siguro panghuli na lang, no? Nice ko lang sabihin na ang dami-dami pang problema kaugnay diyan. Tapos hindi tinuloy 'yung mga onsite hearings. 'Yun po ay inaabangan sana ng representative mo na ito. Alam po natin, Madam Speaker, na simula't sa pool ay naging critical ng Gabriela Women's Party sa pagpapatupad ng four-piece. Dahil pantapan lamang ito sa butas-butas, no? Nabulsa, butas na butas na bulsa ng mga kababaihan at ng kanilang pamilya. Taon-taon, bilyon-bilyon ang ibinubuhos na pondo sa four-piece, pero nananatili ang malawak na kahirapan at patuloy na nag-iibang bansa ang maraming Pilipino. Desente at regular na trabaho po ang panawagan ng ating mamayan, hindi cash grants. Ang kailangan ng mamayan natin. Kaya matibay ang aming posisyon na isa lang sa mahabang deliberasyon talaga ang House Bill 7773 o institutionalisasyon ng four-piece. Maraming salamat, Madam Speaker, maraming salamat, Mr. Sponsor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Honorable Brosas, for that interpolation and.
Majority Leader. Madam Speaker, move that we recognize the Honorable Lito Atienza of Partilis Buhay for his interpolation, so move, Madam Speaker.
The Honorable Atienza is recognized for his interpolation.
Maraming salamat po, Madam Majority Floor Leader. Thank you, Madam Speaker. With the kind indulgence of the sponsor, you would like to ask some questions?
Well, it's an honor to be interpolated by Representative Atienza Buhay.
Unang-unang po sa aming hinahanapan ang sagot. Magkano po ba nakikita niyong pondo? Nakakailangan niyong itong batas? Nakakailanganin itong batas na ito, kung ito ay ipapasan natin taon-taon?
Based po sa projection, well, for 2018 po, ay meron time budget na 89.4 billion. And this, well, ang coverage po niya ay 4.4 million households. 2019? For the 2019 NEP, kasi nga po gaa-funded, it's based sa NEP ay 88,106, 88 billion 106. So bumaba ho siya ng konte.
Did I correctly hear? Eight billion?
Eighty-eight billion. Eighty-eight billion.
Eighty-eight billion?
Opo.
Tama po 'yun? Eighty-eight billion?
Opo, eighty-eight billion.
For one year?
For one year.
Tayo po'y maglalaan ng 88 billion pesos dito sa batas na ito, kung ito po'y ating aprobahan?
On the average po, 'yan po, but again, it would increase over time. But for next year, so it just will hover between 88 to 89.
Sa taong ito, magkano po ba ang nakalaan for the program?
For this year po, ay meron tayong 89,408,000.
Fifty-nine billion?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine billion. So in other words, ang iniisip po natin ay gawin nating taon-taon kasama na sa appropriation to. Tama po ba 'yun?
Opo, papasok siya as part sa ating regular appropriation.
Ano po ang advantage nung gagawin nating batas na kasama na sa ating national appropriation at sa kasalukuyang sistema? Na pinapasa naman natin, binibigyan natin sila ng salapi on the basis of need. Kailangan eh, dibigan. Eh paano po kung ito'y bahagi na ng ating taon-taong appropriation? Di wala na po tayong paraan upang ito'y dumating ang panahon na kailanganin natin tapusin?
Meron namang gagawin, batay sa ating batas. Una, bakit kailangan i-institutionalize na isa batas? Kasi po posible na biglang mawala, i-cut. And you have 4.4 million households, so in a way, kailangan na merong claro na phase-out period. Now, in the proposed law, the transition or the phase-out period ay based dun sa appropriations provision. If 'yung extremely poor, 60% of the targeted household ay maka-ahon from being extremely poor, 'yan po 'yung indicator na pag-phase-out ng program. Of course, ang sinasabihan natin na extremely poor na kalagayan ng mga household ay, 'yan po ay, okay, batay ho dun sa both 'yung kanilang food needs, okay, and non-food needs, when we say extremely poor. Considering also that Congress, ang nilagay po natin dito sa institutionalization, ay may regular na gagawing oversight over the law. Ang habol lang natin, hindi mabibigla or biglaan na mawala 'yung programa.
Ang tanong po ng marami, ang tanong ko rin po ay, ano ang advantage na institutionalizing natin? Sa kabila ng, pwede namang taon-taon sinusuri natin ang kalagayan ng ekonomiya, kalagayan ng ating mga mamamayan, at pagbibigay at paglalaan ng kaupulang pondo. Ano po ba ang advantage nitong batas na ito against what is been practiced from the beginning of the program during the time of President, now Speaker Arroyo?
Well, again, as in any other programs, the issue of predictability. I mean, for government in terms of planning, in terms of looking at the program year by year, kasi unang-unang po, ang programa before this bill is basically an executive, executive action. Now, we're saying that here comes this bill institutionalizing. When we institutionalize, okay, we in a way make the program predictable in terms of having its allocation, in terms of determining the stakeholders as well as when the program will be monitored, the phasing of the program. So, in effect, 'yung isang ahensha, well, DSWD, hindi ho sila mabibigla, kasi baka biglang next year, biglang wala na 'yung programa. I mean, Congress becomes...
Sa aking pagkakaintindi po, Madam Speaker, ang katagang institutionalizing ay permanente. Dahil ang institusyon ng kasal ay permanente. Ang institusyon ng pamilya ay permanente. Ang institusyon ng pananampalataya ay permanente. Pag sinabi ng nating institutionalizing, ibig sabihin permanente na itong programa ito. Ganun po ba ang inyong pakiwari o pakiramdam o pananaw?
Well, because this program nga ay make clear parameters. When you say kailan ho siya matatanggal, the parameter is the extremely poor, ilan sa ating extremely poor ang maiahon from that extremely poor condition, so that's one major indicator. Of course, the poor will always be with us. And even as the Bible says, the poor will always be with us. Now, in this program, okay, what we are targeting is there a specific class of households na gusto natin na mapatawid. And right now, it's very specific, 4.4 million household. And of course, ang critical dito, because Congress can enact this institutionalization law and Congress can also determine when the program will end based on its oversight, then, of course, the bottom line here is Congress still has the last say when or for how long will the program last. But again, there are clear parameters that's being established under this proposal. And one of that parameter is the 60% of extremely poor households of the 4.4 billion na ating maiahon.
Di po ba mas maganda 'yung isipin natin na darating ang araw, ang Pilipino ay mamumuhay na rin ang ayon sa plano ng Panginoon? Masaya, maunlad, may trabaho, at hindi mangangailangan ng subsidiya? Katulad po nito, this is a subsidy program that we are institutionalizing. I'd rather think that after 10 years, ang Pilipino ay hindi na mangangailangan ng tulong na katulad nito sapagat meron ng trabaho na pagkakakitaan niya ng salapi na hindi siya umaasa sa ibibigay ng gobyerno. Di po ba mas maganda sa ating damdamin, sa ating mga Pilipino, na 'yan ang panahigin natin, na itong programa ito ay temporary? Habang merong mahihirap, ay pipilitin nating panatiliin? Pero magsikap tayo, kaya meron po rin itong education component, di po ba? Meron din dito values orientation, I'm sure. Dahil binibigyan natin ang katatagan at tiwala ang bawat mamamayan na tayo ay uunlad sa ating pagsisikap. Pero pag sinabi nating, ginawa na namin permanente 'yan programa 'yan, ay parang nakawawala ng tiwala sa ating kakayahan. Para sinabi na niyo, kayong mahihirap ngayon, mananatili kayong mahirap. Dahil hindi na kayo aangat kailanman, meron na kaming ilala ang pera taon-taon na nakasama na po sa ating mga batas. Don't you think it would be very restrictive of a imagination and the dreams of every citizen for a better life? Rather, you are allocating them to a sector who are intended to be poor and given subsidy by the government? Hindi po niyo nakikita 'yun?
Ang nakikita po natin dito, may mga sektor talaga na ibig sabihin hindi nakaka-breakout sa cycle ng poverty. So 'yun po 'yung tinatarget natin. Ibig sabihin lolo pa nila, okay, na mahirap. Ngayon, may mga kalagayan, una dyan is naapektuhan, una 'yung kulang na hindi makaahon sa kahirapan dahil 'yung edukasyon hindi talaga makakatapos. Dahil sa kahirapan, imbes na mag-aral 'yung bata, ay magtrabaho na lang. So ang point ko rito, Madam Speaker, good Congressman Atienza, is what we're seeking here is this is an investment. Investment po dun sa isang sektor ng ating lipuna na nangangailangan ng ayuda. Okay, at 'yung ayuda na 'yan, we are confident that in a certain point of time, and in a way, we have indicators when that point of time will come, ay maiahon natin dun sa extremely poor na situation. Given that pag natapos nila 'yung K to 12 na pag-aaral, makapag-aral 'yung bata, then because we have a free tertiary education, okay, maka-graduate dun sa extremely poor nilang kalagayan. So hindi naman ho ito open-ended na programa. Because the 4.4 million, as I've said, nagsimula ho 'yan, 2008 na 300,000 families, then by 2012, ay... So in effect po, itong ating panukala, more or less, ay tatagal ho ito ng five years, 'yung ating programa.
'Yun po ang palagay ko, hindi natin mapagtutugma. 'Yung pananaw niyo na naniniwala kayo, ay do'y kakailanganin ng pangmahaba ang panahon. Ang aming po namang paniniwala, given a good leader, given good government, and removing corruption in government, eh uunlad na po tayo eh, andun na po. Eh kailangan lang po magkaroon pa ng dagdag na lakas ang mamamayan at tiwala sa ating kakayahan, at tuloy-tuloy na po ito. Eh ngayon, bibigyan natin ang ganito component ng ating batas sa pamamagitan itong institutionalization of poverty. Eh hindi ko po nakikita 'yun sinasabi niyong benepisyo. Alam ko po 'yung layunin, nung ito ay ipinanukala, nagparticipate din po ako nung mga panahong nakaraan sa kabinet ng dating Pangulo. Ang pondo nun, kung hindi ako nagkakamali, ay nasa milyon lang, mga 60 millioners. And ngayon eh, we're talking about 89 billion every year! At lalaki ng lalaki 'yan. So we are actually seeing a deteriorating Philippines rather than a stop-gap measure to bridge families suffering from poverty to a better kondisyon. Di po ba layunin nito ay dalihin ang mahihirap sa isang mas mataas na antas ng buhay? Tama po 'yun?
Tama po 'yun, at 'yung intervention po na 'yan ay sinasabi natin nakatargeted dun sa investment natin sa kalusukan nung pamilya na 'yan at dun sa pag-aaral na makatapos 'yung mga anak nitong extremely poor ng up to senior high school. So meaning, even the target, hindi naman ibig sabihin na tapos na 'yung anak nila sa high school ay patuloy pa rin sila sa programa. Or pag 'yung 60%, sinasabi nga natin extremely poor. Now, as to other programs po, kasi ang gusto nating tingnan 'yung macro na kalagayan ng ating ekonomiya at paano makatulong, meron pong ibang mga programa ang gobyerno dyan. In fact, we need fiscal policies to improve, investment policies. We also need to improve 'yung sinasabi nating revenue generation and efficiency in tax collection. So these are complementary measures na gusto natin mapalago 'yung ating kabuong ekonomiya. But again, even if lumago 'yung ating kabuong ekonomiya through these other measures, pero kung itong 4.4 million ay hindi natin matutukan at hindi maalalayan kahit na lumago. Kasi ang, even ang growth rate po natin ay hindi namanyan talaga nagpi-trickle down. So makakatulong itong social safety net na 'yan para itong hindi, kumbaga hindi kasama sa growth na mangyari, ay maipasama ho natin. So alalay ho ang habol natin dito.
Madam Speaker, I join the gentleman, sponsor, as far as that objective is concerned. 'Yun nga po ang layunin nito eh. Ang giniusap po ng inyong lingkod ay 'yung katotohanang, bakit kailangan is a batas? Ang isang programang supposedly temporary as a bridge. Ano po ba ibig sabihin ng pantawid? Temporary, di po ba? May tawid natin sa paghihirap ang ating mga kababayan? At this point in time, anyway, we can debate on this issue lengthily and hindi rin tayo magkakasundo. Sapagat sa aking pagkakaintindi, maganda po 'yung temporary lamang ito at hindi permanente. Kayo, naglalayo kayong gawin permanente na ito? At this point, our object of the program and our common interest is to find out how effective is it? To po ba'y nakatulong talaga sa mga mahihirap na pamilya? At kung ito'y nakatulong, meron po ba kayong figures on how it has helped improve the quality of life of the beneficiaries?
Meron ho tayong mga pagtatasa, o meron ginawang pagtatasa dito sa programa. And again, 'yung indicators in terms of quality of life. Ang dahil nga ito'y nakatutok sa investment sa health at saka sa education, meron ho mga pagbabago or improvements. Una, 'yun nga, 'yung pag-access ng mga households dun sa mga government facilities ay tumaas po. Ang sa mga bata naman, may specific na mga pagtasa na kung saan, like 'yung malnutrition or underweight ng mga bata ay nag-improve. So ibig sabihin dun ho natin na mi-measure. Now, as to overall na quality of life, there are other factors na kailangan ding tingnan. But this intervention, because it's directed on an investment in health and education, then the focus of the assessment would be on that. So whatever inputs, the output should be measured based on the inputs, the targeted inputs on health and education.
Sa tingin po ng kagalang-galang na Congressman Villarreal, kung makaunti po ba ang mahihirap ngayon dahil sa programang itinutulong natin sa kanila?
Nung 2015 po, meron 1.4 million 'yung sinabing from extremely poor ay naiahon ho sa ganong kalagayan, of the 4.4 million. So ang meron ho, batay sa inyong tanong, meron ho tayong natulungan at naiahon?
Ang tanong ko po eh, nakakatulong po ba ito upang lumiid ang sektor ng mahihirap sa Pilipinas?
Well, in terms of poverty incidents po, 2009, it's 26%. 2015 is 21.6%. So meron ho contribution dun sa pagliit. While the four piece cannot be... While the four piece cannot be attributed na alone na nakatulong dito, but based na rin po sa studies, no? Malaki ang naitulong ng four piece dito sa pag-reduce nung poverty incidents.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to be clarified. Sino po ba ang primary beneficiary targeted by the four piece ngayon? Alam ko po 'yung targeted beneficiary noon, pero ngayon, sino po ba ang targeted beneficiary na?
Well, ang targeted beneficiary na natin, uh, ay 'yung nasa extremely poor, no, na category. So meaning, the extremely poor, based to sa definition, ito 'yung mga households na, na, in terms of food intake, okay? 'Yung food needs nila hindi mamimit, no, 'yung daily food intake needs. Panganoa, extremely poor, uh, also because 'yung kanilang non-food, no? Needs ay hindi rin mamimit, no? So in, in, based a global, no, na classification, these are the families earning daily, no, na mga $1.90.
So untargeted beneficiary up to now are the poorest of the poor?
Yes.
How do you define the poorest of the poor?
When we say the poorest of the poor, uh, pwede hong dun sa income definition, but in, in this, uh, in the four piece, it says the extremely poor, no? So that's the poorest of the poor. When you said, when you said, uh, sino 'yan, it's based on, uh, 'yung measure nga, the indicators of hindi matugunan 'yung food and non-food, uh, needs. And it's based also on, uh, well, attest, no? I mean, in a community, specific community, meron hong, uh, sinusorby at, uh, tinatarget, no? Ina-identify, no, based on a proxy means test, no?
Yung po bang mga natutulog sa kalsada eh? Qualifikado rin sa programang itong ngayon? At si nung unang panahon, qualifikado sila. Ngayon, tinatanong ko ang bagalang-galang na sponsor. Do you envision the poorest of the poor? The families with no home, no shelter, no roof, no food, no job? Are they still qualified to avail of this project, program? Or you have now disqualified them?
Well, uh, isang katangian, 'yung nabanggit niyo, uh, 'yung homeless, no? It's still, they're still part, no, of the CCT program because, yun nga, they fall under the poorest of the poor. And in fact, DSWDA aside from the CCT, meron namang pinoprobide na provisional housing, no, for this, uh, well, this poorest of the poor, na ang naging problema talaga di ba paikot-ikot sila natutulog ilalim sa, uh, mga bridges, okay, mga tulay? So kinukuha din sila. And if this provisional, uh, mga homes are provided, then they will clarify, uh, qualify dun ho sa modified CCT program ng, uh, uh, ng four piece, no?
Paragay ko, hindi rin kami magkakasundo rito, Madam Speaker. Because right now, dalabas lang ako ng congressional road. Pupunta ako ng mga landas, papuntang Maynila. Marami po akong madadaan ng homeless. At pagka-umuulan, talagang nakakaawa sapagat sila'y nababasa, nalalamig sa gutom, walang kakainin sa gabing darahan. I would consider them the poorest of the poor. Pag nakakakita po ako nito, binababaan ko. At tinatanong ko sa kanila, kayo ba'y nakikinabang sa programang Pantawid Pamilya? Miss, Madam Speaker, ang sagot sa akin ng 99.9%. Hindi po namin alam yun. Ba't kayo nandito? Ba't di kayo pumunta sa Social Welfare? Mag-apply kayo, kung hindi niyo alam, sinasabi ko sa inyo. Bilang isang Congressman, may nakalaan pera sa inyo. Ang tanong ko po eh, ang Social Welfare po ba umiikot para tignan itong kalagayan na mga kababayan natin? Huwag sila nalayo dito sa Metro Manila, lalo na sa Maynila. Pumunta kayo pag gabi, puno-puno ng homeless, Euroas Boulevard. 'Yung luneta, ganun din po, malaking dormitory na po ngayon nun ng mga homeless. At 'yung mga kaling, uh, daanan ng mga susakyan, kitang-kita ng mga motorista ang mga mahihirap na hindi na umangat-angat sa kanilang kabuhayan sapagat hindi sila naaabot ng pera na nakalaan po rito sa programang ito. Kaya ako po'y meron talaga akong agam-agam. Bakit natin gagawin permanente ito programa? Hindi naman tayo nakakakita ng pagbabago. Parami ng parami ang homeless families, hindi po nababawasan. Baka meron din social welfare dito ngayong gabing ito eh. Tingnan po rin 'yung kalagayan ng mga poorest of the poor para pagdating ng budget na DSWDA, masagutan niyan tuyran ito. I have statistics in my hand, I have personal knowledge with me. Hindi po natutulungan ang mga mahihirap na tunay dito sa four piece program. Kaya, kung bibigyan pa natin ang permanenting status tung batas, napakahirap pong lulunin. Mas maganda siguro, ilaan na po ito sa pagkaehin ang mahihirap, sa bubong ng mga mahihirap, sa kanilang gamot na kailangan. At hindi na po itong programang titignan natin, magandang layunin. Itong ating pinag-uusapan eh, puro maganda ito. Pero hindi po nakararating sa kinuuukulan. So I question the effectiveness of the program. And I find it very difficult to understand why we must support an act that will institutionalize the program which should be judged on a year-to-year basis. Kailangan may report, meron tayong appreciation, meron talagang merong natutulungan. Tuloy natin, nagkakaisa naman tayo sa kagustuhan tumulong sa mahihirap. Pero hindi po 'yung automatically, gusto niyong maglaantay 'yung salapi as a matter of right rather than as a matter of need.
Uh, batay ho sa inyong karanasan, Representative Atiyensa. I think, uh, there are also other programs, no? Na ginagawa po 'yung ating pamalaan. Dahil po 'yung nabanggit niyo na mga homeless, ito talaga 'yung una, wala hong income, no? They don't have income whatsoever, okay? Uh, wala ho silang abot, uh, tinutulog. So, so in a way, 'yung kanilang capability or capacity, okay? To, to help themselves ay talagang very poor, no, verlo. So, iba-hong, uh, kategoriya yon, no? At meron tayong modified CCT program, uh, targeting this, no? In fact, yeah, in, in fact po sa NCR, uh, sa ngayon, 'yung covered ng modified CCT, meaning itohong mga sinasabi nating homeless, no? There are 4,629 households, no? Uh, kasama na ho 'yung mga bata dyan, no? Now, as to the regular CCT ho, ang sinasabi natin dito, of course, ang natutulungan dito ay mga household na meron pa rin silang income, no? Uh, source of income, no? But dahil nga hindi sapat, 'yung kanilang mga anak ay hindi muna nila pag-aralin, no? So itohong CCT ay ayuda dun sa mga sinasabi nating income poor, no? Na mga household na hindi matugunan 'yung kanilang household, ay 'yung kanilang food and non-food needs, uh, daily. But the conditions of like, nabanggit niyo po mga homeless, 'yung talagang walang trabaho, uh, namumulot lang ng, uh, namumulot ng basura or nanghihingi, no, ng pagkaehin sakali, may iba rin hong programa 'yung DSWDA dyan. Dahil nga mas, uh, itohong talagang charity or talagang, uh, programa na kailangan mong tugunan immediately 'yung sitwasyon nila, no? So, so while the four piece is really, uh, parang an investment program po dun sa mga targeted na household, targeting children, pregnant women, no? So ito po 'yung regular CCT. Mga four piece households na with children.
Miss, Madam Speaker, due to the lateness of the hour and noticing that whoever dwindling number of members on the floor while we are discussing a very critical and possibly essential measure. Kailangan lang po natin i-adjust ng konti para maging makatotohanan at hindi po maging aksaya lang ang salapi ng bayan. So I am moving that we suspend the deliberation and the interpolation, but I would like to reserve the right. When we open up the subject again next week, this representation is given more time to clarify essential questions.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, uh, I move that we approve Journal Number 8 dated August 7, 2018.
Session is suspended.
Madam Speaker, I move to suspend consideration of House Bill Number 773. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Ariel Casilo of Annapawis.
The gentleman is recognized for a brief manifestation. We're given five minutes.
Just a brief manifestation since I've received and read the copy of House Bill Number 7735 to be subjected for third and final reading, voting. Um, I would like to address this manifestation to the Plenary Affairs Bureau or to the Rules that my name is still included as principal or co-author of this measure. While I have already filed my withdrawal last May 17, 2018, and before I started my interpolation for the second reading of this measure, I also registered strongly my withdrawal of this measure. So Madam Speaker, please advise or instruct the proper committee of this, uh, preparing this document to delete my name or to reproduce and resubmit another.
The manifestation is noted and the committee will be instructed to do so. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider bills under the calendar of business for Thursday and Friday. Madam Speaker, pursuant to our rules, allow me to put forth an omnibus motion for the consideration of the following House bills. House Bill Number 7734 under Committee Report 738. House Bill Number 7786 under Committee Report 766. House Bill Number 6979 under Committee Report 773. House Bill Number 7817 under Committee Report 775. House Bill Number 7827 under Committee Report 779. House Bill Number 7828 under Committee Report 780. House Bill Number 7844 under Committee Report Number 781. House Bill Number 7845 under Committee Report 782. House Bill Number 7847 under Committee Report 784. House Bill Number 7866 under Committee Report Number 788. House Bill Number 7869 under Committee Report 789. House Bill Number 7871 under Committee Report 790. House Bill Number 7877 under Committee Report 792. House Bill Number 7891 under Committee Reports Number 795. House Bill Number 7901 under Committee Report 796. House Bill Number 7978 under Committee Report Number 803. House Bill Number 7979 under Committee Report Number 804. House Bill Number 7987 under Committee Report Number 805. House Bill Number 7, uh, rather, 6319 under Committee Report Number 806. So move, Madam Speaker, your honor.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. All those in favor of the approval of the aforementioned House bills on second reading, please say aye. All those against, please say nay. The ayes have it, the aforementioned measures are approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, we are in receipt of the Bi-Camera Conference Committee Report on the disagreeing votes on House Bill Number 6031 mandating the integration of the Maasin City College into the Southern Lata State University. Madam Speaker, in accordance with our rules, I move that we ratify the said Bi-Camera Conference Committee Report. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we designate the following members to the Bi-Camera Conference Committee on the disagreeing provisions of House Bill Number 6617 and Senate Bill Number 1390 on strengthening the Philippine Comprehensive Policy on HIV/AIDS. They are Representative Angelina Tan, Representative Sandra Erigel, Representative Estridita Swansing, Representative Ron Salo, Representative Kakabagaw, Representative Piya Kayatano, and Representative Cecilia Leonila Chavez.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, as requested by its author Rep. Victoria Yap, I move that we recommit House Bill Number 7184 under Committee Report Number 609 to the Committee on Natural Resources. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears, the Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move for the change of referral of the following measure, House Bill Number 7705, Supporting Modern Biotechnology for Sustainable Rural Development in the Philippines, from the Committee on Agriculture and Food to the Committee on Trade and Industry. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we designate the following members to the Bi-Camera Conference Committee on the disagreeing votes on House Bill Number 5556. Representative Franz Alvarez, Representative Xavier Jesus Romualdo, Representative Sherwin Tugna, Representative Jose Tejada, Representative Luis Ferrer, Representative Alfredo Garbin. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we include additional co-authors to House Bill Number 7773, 7774, 7823, and 7857 as contained in the list to be submitted by the Committee on Rules. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to reiterate the approval, a motion to approve Journal Number 8 dated August... Madam Speaker, I'd like to reiterate the approval, motion to approve Journal Number Eight dated August seven, twenty eighteen. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The motion to approve the Journal dated August eight, two thousand eighteen is approved.
Motion to suspend, Madam Speaker.
Session is suspended. Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to adjourn the session until Monday, three P.M. in the afternoon. August thirteen.
Is there any objection?
At three o'clock in the afternoon.
The chair hears none. The session is adjourned until three o'clock in the afternoon of August thirteen, two thousand eighteen.